Okay, so welcome everybody. I'm Ken Andrews, Chair of Coloradans for Safe Technology and welcome to our virtual town hall meeting. Could I ask a couple of housekeeping things up front? If you could keep your audio on mute, please. It'll just prevent background sound. And as we go through later on, when we get to the Q and A, we'll ask that you submit any questions you have via the chat rather than than than, you know, audio. So this meeting is going to be recorded. So if anyone is worried about privacy, feel free to rename yourself. But I will not be publishing your emails and stuff like that. So so don't worry about that. So I know that we've got, we've got a very good turnout, almost 100 people have signed up. And so we're absolutely delighted with that. And some of you, I think, will be definitely new to Coloradans for safe technology. And so just a little bit about who is Coloradans to save technology. Well, we are a statewide education and advocacy group with no affiliation to any political or religious group or party. We recognize and promote independent peer reviewed science based research only. We are inclusive and we welcome all who have an interest in helping achieve our vision. We are volunteers and we operate on the basis of mutual and respect and cooperation at all times. So the vision that we're striving for is to live in a world where responsible modern technology serves our needs while protecting the health and well being of ourselves, our societies and all living things. Our mission is to seek to educate the public and public representatives on the risks and downsides of wireless technology and to promote the implementation of safe and efficient alternatives. So so welcome to to Coloradans for Safe Technology. And that's a nice sort of segue into. So how come this virtual town hall meeting came about? Well, a few weeks ago, a citizen of Denver, fine upstanding citizen of Denver, found out that there was going to be a cell tower installed at the end of his driveway. And he thought, wow, okay, well, let me, let me look into this and see, is this a good thing or a bad thing? And like most people who certainly have joined Colorado for Safe Technology, that's what we did. And when you lift up the rug and look underneath, it's a, it makes you scratch your head. So so Phil said, my goodness, I am concerned about this. I'm sure other people are, we need to have a town hall meeting. But I don't, I don't belong to any group to do it. So cut a long story short, Phil and I spoke. And I said, absolutely, Coloradans for Safe Technology will work with you on that. And so we formed a little Denver based planning team. And here we are today. And and then also, we are extremely fortunate to have our expert panel join us as well. And I will be introducing our panel shortly. So I want to thank Phil. Phil has been the driving force behind this. And I also want to emphasize that this illustrates the power of one, what one person can do. And it's so timely, Phil. So thank you again for doing that. All right, so let me move into introducing our expert panel. And we, as I said, we have four, four people who have given up their time to to help us with answering your questions and so on. And I'd like first of all, to introduce Daphne Tackover. Daphne is Director of 5G Wireless harms project of the Children's Health Defense, a nonprofit organization chaired by Robert F. Kennedy's juniors dedicate, Robert F. Kennedy junior, sorry, dedicated to eliminating the epidemic of chronic sickness in children from environmental toxins, including wireless radiation. Daphne is an attorney and also has a technology background from her service as a telecommunications and computers officer in the Israeli Defense Forces. Daphne has been one of the leading experts and advocates on this topic globally. In 2012, Daphne initiated and led a Supreme Court case in Israel to replace the use of Wi Fi in schools with wide networks, a case that led to the first limitations on Wi Fi use in schools worldwide. In 2020, after joining Children's Health Defense, she initiated a landmark case against the FCC challenge, challenging its health guidelines regarding wireless radiation. Our arguments in the in the case were heard recently on January 25th, in which the court has expressed concerns regarding the FCC guidelines. Daphne has a large, has a large part in the growing grass roof movement. Until COVID, she has traveled extensively around the country to educate public officials and the public and to awaken communities to 5G and wireless harms. She worked on this issue on a federal, state and municipal level. So welcome, Daphne. Next up, we have our very own Dr. Timothy Shackley of Boulder. Dr. Shackley is an international consultant in computer and communications engineering and in technical standards development. He presently serves as Secretary of the ISO I E C S C 25 Working Group, which is the International Standards Committee for Home Electronic Systems. He's also a technical co editor of several new international standards relating to smart buildings and participates in a range of national and international standards bodies related to distributed energy and solar plus storage technology and policy issues. As an entrepreneur, Dr. Shackley has engineered the development of electric utility premises, gateways and energy management systems for over 25 years and has played a major role in the development of technical standards for smart meters and advanced metering infrastructure. He is currently an active participant of the Gridwise Architecture Council hosted by the Pacific Northwest National Laborities, U.S. Department of Energy and authored technical papers presented at six consecutive GWAC Department of Energy sponsored technical conferences from 2007 through 2012. Dr. Dr. Shackley is a former faculty member of the University of Colorado College of Engineering and Applied Science. He is a co founder of BI Incorporated, a $1 billion company based in Boulder, Colorado. BI Incorporated is a pioneering developer of RFID technology. He holds, he holds a master's in telecommunications, tell, brother, that's sorry, Tim, I'm butchering it. He holds a master's in telecommunications engineering and a PhD in communication policy from the University of Colorado Boulder. My also add that one of his many publications includes the book Reinventing Wires, The Future of Landlines and Networks. And that's this, this book here. And this was published in 2018 and we, we and CO4ST regard this as essential reading for anyone who wants to understand this topic in more detail. So thank you, Tim, for joining us. Next up, Dr. Scott Cunningham. Scott Cunningham, M.D. is a conventionally trained internal medicine physician who was diagnosed with Hashimoto's thyroiditis, a systemic autoimmune illness which had left him with fatigue and somnolence and disabling knee pain. Knowing conventional approaches offered no relief, he studied to learn integrative approaches to reversing his own chronic illness and now offers those same approaches to his patients suffering from chronic illness. Along the way, he became acutely aware of the disruptive effect of wireless radiation upon biological systems, starting with his own. He has now become somewhat of a reluctant expert advising both his own patients and others in the community advocating for safer technologies. And last but not least on our panel is Ryan Ashley and Ryan is a certified electromagnetic radiation assessment specialist. His company Neural Vitality Network specializes in EMF assessment and remediation of fields and frequencies including AC magnetic, AC electric, radio frequency from 1 megahertz to 10 gigahertz and dirty electricity, in addition to geopathic stress mitigation for homes, offices, farms and businesses. And likewise, welcome, Ryan. So this is our eminent panel. And again, we, we so much appreciate that you are with us. So as far as the the agenda for the rest of the the meeting, we're going to start out with Dr. Tim Shackley giving a brief overview of what is this 5G stuff, you know, basically, what is a little bit of a history? Some of the implications of that. And then we'll move into Dr. Scott Cunningham talking to us about, so why should we worry about this? Are there any health effects? And yeah, there are one or two. Scott's going to talk about them. Then Phil Subelman will will share a Denver map, which I think will probably have you squirming in your chair. It's, it's, I call it a density map and it shows where existing and planned towers are going to be. And then followed by that, Daphne will talk about, so basically, how do we get here? I mean, what's the regulatory environment? You know, what political action is taking place and what are some of the implications? And then that'll also lay the framework will for can we do anything about this? Absolutely. And there are a number of municipalities, countries, cities, towns, rural areas that are having significant success. And I think you'll find that very interesting. So after that introduction, then we'll move into the Q and A section. And again, if I can ask that you don't post questions on the chat until we start that section, that'll be around 4:20 ish. All right. And then I do want to add that again, if 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 we don't get to all of your questions, please don't be too disappointed. Because if there are a significant number of unanswered questions, we will look at doing another session of this type to address those because we want you to be able to learn all the ins and outs and what's true and what's not true with this stuff. So we're going to do our best today. So please be patient. Okay. After the Q and A, we will talk about a call to action and we are very excited to grow our dedicated team of volunteers on getting after this and really making sure we have a safe technology environment in Colorado. And then we'll have a time for some closing comments. So that's what we've got planned. So with that, I'd like to hand over to Dr. Tim Shackley. Tim? Just unmute you. There you go.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Ken. Thanks for the invitation to talk, to try to make some of this a little more clear. I'll start out with a bit of a technical overview. Ken has promised to keep me on time here. I have basically six questions I'm going to start with. One of them is what, what is the brief history and what do we mean by these different generations, 5G, 1G, 2G, 3G, 4G, 5G? First, I'll say that what we're talking about is the radios, what we call the radio spectrum. The radio spectrum is a broad term that means electromagnetic radiation all the way from zero to well beyond the the frequencies of light and and everything in between. When we talk about the radio spectrum, you know, for instance, the electric power lines run at 60 cycles per second. That's pretty low in the radio spectrum, but it does radiate. And the that's called 60 hertz. We use the term hertz to mean or cycles per second. We talk in terms of both frequency and wavelength. When we say frequency, we mean the hertz cycles per second. When we talk about wavelength, that's the calculated from that by it's an inverse function of 300 million meters per second, the speed of light. So if you want to calculate the frequency, you divide 300 million by the wavelength and vice versa. If you want to calculate the wavelength, you divide 300 million by the frequency and you get, basically, it's a way of measuring the same thing. They're really in terms of the cellular telephony that we're going to be talking about telephone, the cell, the cell phones. Essentially, we are talking about three different bands or frequency bands. The low band, the mid band and the high band, the mid, let's call it mid band is, let's say, the low band is 600 to 1000 megahertz or what is basically about 300 millimeter or yeah, 300 centimeters or millimeters. So the that's called a microwave. That's, those are microwave frequencies and then which are the high end of what we call radio, radio, television, and then microwave, and then we go up into millimeter waves and then into heat and then into light and then into ultraviolet light. So that's the, the way the spectrum works and we're talking about 4G, if 1G to 4G's cell phones, microwave ovens, radar and smart meters all running in this low band of 600 to 1,000 megahertz. The mid band is, let's call it 1,000 nominally, 1,000 to 6,000 megahertz or one to six gigahertz. And that includes equipment like Wi Fi, cordless phones, wireless power transfer, all kinds of gadgets. And then the high band is the newest one that we've been talking about. That's only very recently been introduced. And that is above six gigahertz up to about 70 gigahertz, which gets into what we call millimeter wave frequencies where the 30, for instance, a 30 gigahertz frequency is equal to a about I think about 15 or 20 millimeters. The that's what we call 5G. That is called 5G data services. And now they're starting to talk about 6G in those millimeter wave frequencies. The radio waves behave very differently in these frequencies because the higher the frequency gets, the more directional it is. It's like becomes more and more like a light beam. As you know, light beams are very directional. Those are also much higher frequencies. But the millimeter waves sometimes behave a little bit like light in that it's into a beam for, it forms into a beam and it is very directional and it, it won't go through certain things like radio. So when we get into cellular telephones, we're talking in terms of both analog, original ones were analog and the newer ones were digital. The first cell phone started out in the first generation was in the 1980s. We're analog and they used the frequency, but what was called frequency division, multiplexing, the phones were about the size of a brick. They, they did work, but they didn't use the, the, the radio spectrum very efficiently. Second generation was introduced in the 1990s throughout the 1990s and those, that's went to digital. And there were two different standards, one in the US and the other in the rest of the world. The CDMA code division multiplexing was used for the US and GSM was the Global System Mobile, which is the most of the rest of the world, European system. And then there's a lot of that is still quite, you know, used a lot. And then 3G was introduced in the tooth around 2000. That was a next generation digital system. That's what they introduced texting along with that. So that was called G GPRS, a lot of acronyms here, General Packet Radio Service. And then and then the more recent one, which was introduced around 2010 was the 4G, also known as LTE. The, the 4G used, these all use this low band, what I call the low band, 600 to 1,000 megahertz. The 4G introduced a lot better data transfer. Ironically, LTE, the initials LTE meant long term evolution. What they mean when they, what the industry means when they say long term, it means until they can sell us something new. That's long term. Okay. And then now we into 2020, we had introduced basically 5G, which was the next generation, but it's a little bit different in that it did not replace 4G. It was an add on to 4G for data. It's not used for voice. It's used for data. So yours, when you say you have a 5G phone, it's really a 4G and 5G combined. The 4G is used for the voice and the supervisory functions of the phone and the 5G is for video, basically high speed video delivery. And that was why they, they wanted the, so the, the idea of these millimeter wave frequencies were going to be used by 5G in the range of 14 to 79 gigahertz. So those are way up in the millimeter waves region. Now, the problem was they didn't, it didn't really, those frequencies had never been used before for this purpose. It was new technology and they called it new radio, 5G new radio NR was an acronym. So the next question, why, why 5G required, why does 5G require so many towers so close together, the small cells? Well, the reason is that millimeter waves, the higher you get in these frequencies, they're line of sight. They have penetration problems, absorption problems. They don't go through rain, moisture, leaves, glass walls. So they have to have a lot of them and they have to be right in front of your house. The five mile away, the 4G work with a tower that was five to 10 miles away. That won't, the 5G frequencies don't work that way. So they wanted to put them everywhere. The why, but today we really don't have much real 5G. It's still experimental. Why? Because the new radio standards for 5G were not finished and the, there was a cost issues involved. The lack of equipment, there weren't very many manufacturers and they got into a big a big battle, a political battle of the US government with the company called Huawei, which is a huge Chinese company and they got in this fight, a trade battle with China. So Huawei is by far the largest manufacturer of telecommunications in the world. And they're the champion of 5G and 5G is their, their forte and they dominate that market. So what has happened is that the industry has gone around and pushed the laws through a lot of state legislatures and through the federal rules through the Federal Communications Commission because it was FCC was headed by Verizon. And they pushed these rules that took away the local, the rights of localities to regulate the placement of cells. So they could build lots of of small cells everywhere without having to deal with local governments, or at least very much. But what we have today is a proliferation of small cells, but not much real 5G. So what has happened is that 5G has morphed into an excuse or a cover story for 4G antenna densification. Because 4G works better with more, with more cells and fewer users on each cell. So they went ahead with it anyway. So the, in a way, it's become an excuse. Either way, we get more radiation closer to our homes. What is, the next question, a third question is, what does all this mean? Proliferation of devices, ubiquity of use and the loss of privacy, local control and device dependency? The, what I would like to address that by saying that the, there's a lot of rhetoric about it, about this, about the Internet of Things and all the wonderful things that could be done with 5G such as medical surgical you know, remote surgery, autonomous cars, factory automation and other futuristic hype. But in fact, all of these things can be done with conventional optical fiber networks, probably better. Only the ones that are mobile are really would require wireless, cellular wireless anyway. But they always cite these examples for, for some reason. I can't imagine a reason that you'd want to depend on a radio system to control an autonomous car. That would be pretty risky. Given the rely, the lack of reliability in any kind of radios based system compared to a fiber. In any case, there is another issue and that has to do with surveillance. The about 2000, Google invented a new improve in their search for the perfect search engine. They stumbled upon a business model about 2000 that our personal data has become a commodity for a new information technology business model worldwide. And this allowed advertising to take over the internet under the control of Google largely. And it became the basis of Facebook as a business, a captive audience and the influence that it could, could exert with the, the amount of data about personal data about everybody. Facebook, Amazon, Microsoft, the largest corporations in the world have basically embraced all of this, this commercial surveillance model. It led to not only to advertising, but to behavioral modification, which is one of the functions of advertising to get you to buy things, but also political influence. And the example of the Cambridge Analytica and Analytica scandal in the, in the 2016 election is a good example of what can be done with this technology in terms of influence, political influence. Smart homes, smartphones have become a data collection device. First, the first purpose of the cell of the smartphone is really surveillance data collection. You think it's about helping you talk or to get access to a website. But what it is actually doing is watching what you're doing and making a record of that. That's all going into some massive databases. The, this technology called the Internet of Things is really about commercial surveillance and data collection first. For instance, if you buy a Fitbit, which is a device you might put on your wrist to monitor your pulse and your health or your physical activity and your you know, what for exercise and things like that, you think it's to help you do that. But really what it does first, this is a report all your personal information when you get up and when you go to bed and when you're active and you're inactive and and what you're doing and how fast your heart is beating, all goes to Google and Facebook.
Tim, we, we probably need to wrap up and move on to Scott. Are you, are you almost there?
Yeah, I can wrap that up. But the, there are some other questions here that we can address, but basically the idea behind all of this is the, is there's an answer to all of this and that is optical fiber to the home. We have, we have a good example here in our backyard, Longmont, Colorado has got the best system in the world. The most advanced and newest fiber to the premises for everybody in Longmont getting a gigabit per second internet access for $50 a month. Their other example is Chattanooga, Tennessee. I just attended a webinar this morning by the people at in Chattanooga that, that talked about a study that showed there was a $2.7 billion economic benefit from installing this fibers municipal fiber system in the city of Chattanooga. So in any case, I'll there's, there's plenty of resources. The, one of the books I'd recommend is a book called The Age of Surveillance Capitalism, The Fight for the Human Future on the New Frontier of Power, published in 2019 by Shoshana Zuboff, a professor at Harvard and also in the Beckman Center for Internet and Society at Harvard Law School. This book is, is become a real turning point for a lot of understanding, gaining an understanding of where information technology is taking us today. So I recommend that are any, there are a lot of you know, if you don't want to read a 700 page book, you can get a lot of more summaries of it from a lot of different sources. So anyway, I'll turn it back to Ken.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tim. That is incredible background. And as you and I have talked, and as you very appropriately said, 5G really doesn't work, guys. It's a marketing thing. As Tim says, it doesn't go through rain, it doesn't go through leaves and things. So that sucks. So don't be sucked in. That's what we said. So over to Scott. Now, Scott, you want to share something? Are you able to do that? Let's make sure you can.
Yeah. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me share my screen. Let's see.
Okay, so let me share my screen. Let's see. Looks like you may need to allow me to share my screen. Oops, you're muted now, Ken.
Let's find out. I think that's in security shared screen. There we go.
Ready to go?
Yes, you should be able to share it. See that?
Okay, everybody see the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me. Okay, can everybody hear me still? Okay, I can't hear myself. Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Sheckley, for that helpful overview and really somewhat I kind of my eyes were bugging out with stuff that you were telling us. So thank you very much. So I'd like to also thank all of you for having the insight to take a closer look at what are the real impacts of these cell towers that as we talked about, seem to be going up everywhere. And in particular, of course, are they safe? As I've spoken to individuals and groups on this subject, I have found that misunderstandings about wireless telecommunications infrastructure are really very common. So in the next few minutes, I'd like to give you some facts about wireless technology that I think that you'll find shocking. And I'll document everything I say with scientific studies. Let's see. I need to adjust my screen here again. Let's see, I'm having some difficulty. Let's see. Let me try something else. Can you guys see that slide, the slide now? I assume, okay. All right. So my connection to all this, let me try this one more time. See if this works. Okay.
Yep.
So my my connection to all of this is, is, is Ken mentioned, I'm a practicing internal medicine physician. And I offer my patients what I call integrative care, which utilizes nutritional and other natural biologic biological strategies to reverse chronic illness. My focus being on thyroid and other autoimmune conditions, particularly those that are resistant to conventional therapies. So you might ask, why in the world would a medical doctor have any reason to be talking about telecommunications infrastructure? What could telecommunications technology possibly have to do with health? Of course, none of what I'm going to be saying is intended to diagnose, cure, or prevent any disease or disorder of any kind. Let me start by giving you a thumbnail description of how the wireless telecommunications system works, at least from my perspective. I'm not as as schooled on this and it's Dr. Sheckley, obviously, but from my perspective, a cell tower is basically a radio broadcast station for your cellphone with one very important difference. Cell towers and cell phones use microwaves, as we've discussed, to talk to each other. And just in case anybody isn't familiar with this, I brought aside, which actually documents this, I show this at a lot of my classes. Bells it out here, cellphone towers emit high frequency radio waves, which are microwaves. And when I say microwaves, it's as as Tim mentioned, it's it's a radio frequency waveform, very similar to the one used by the microwave oven in your kitchen. So here's a diagrammatic representation of the electromagnetic spectrum that Dr. Tim was talking about. Where you see radio waves on the far left, meaning the lower frequency end and X-rays and nuclear radiation on the ultra high frequency end, visible light right in the middle. Microwaves then fit right between the AM FM radio waves and visible light. So let's talk about it. Is it a, is it a big deal to to be exposed to microwave radiation from cell towers? What do scientific studies say about the safety of microwaves all around us? It turns out that microwave radiation has never passed any safety testing. In fact, the microwave radio frequency used by cell towers and cell phones has been demonstrated by scientific studies to cause numerous harmful effects to any biological system ever tested. And we have thousands of studies, thousands of these studies, I've included a few of them here. The first group of studies were done with animals as the research subjects. And as you, as you will see, the results are devastating. For example, Toretti's group here in the in the top window here found multiple pathologies in rat kidney and bladder tissue. Dazdags group in the second window here found an alteration of several reproductive parameters in adult rats, including sperm head defects. By the way, that's the the head of the sperm is where the DNA is located. Desmuk's group demonstrated reduced cognitive function and damaged DNA in the brain of the of the rats. The second group of studies highlighted highlighted here come from observational studies of humans. Remember, since this technology was never subjected to basic animal safety testing, it would be unethical to deliberately expose humans to microwaves in a randomized clinical trial. So in line with this basic ethical principle, the following studies are observational studies that simply document the health impact of microwaves the average person is exposed to in the course of daily life. For example, Avendano observed a significant decrease in sperm motility and an increase in sperm DNA fragmentation in human donor sperm samples. In another example, Kurana reviewed ten observational human studies investigating a possible association between cell tower proximity, you know, meaning location and neuro behavioral effects or cancer in human communities and found an increased prevalence of adverse neuro behavioral symptoms or even cancer in populations living at distances less than five hundred meters from cell towers. So that means you could live as far as a third of a mile away from a cell tower and you're still more likely to have adverse neuro behavioral symptoms or even cancer. By the way, none of the studies reported exposure above accepted international guidelines suggesting that current guidelines may be inadequate in protecting the health of human populations. This, this isn't tabloid fodder. This is peer reviewed science that we're talking about. So I'll leave you with this. If you discover that big telecom and, you know, Tim has talked about this, is preparing to plant, talked about it a little bit anyway. Plant a cell tower outside your children's bedroom window or at the end of your driveway. Don't accept their plans to impose this scientifically proven health hazard as a permanent fixture. I would suggest you do whatever you need to do to have those plans stopped. At any rate, I hope this brief overview of the silence, science behind wireless technology has been helpful. And I'll turn it back over to you, Ken.
Great, thanks, Scott. Yeah, it's pretty chilling stuff. And can you unshare your screen there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Doing that.
Down, down the bottom there on the tool bar. There you go. Perfect. So yeah, this is a nice segue into into your section, definitely. So I'll just be quiet and let you take it away. Oh, hang on, Phil. You have a question? You you're muted.
I wanted him to speak before, remember?
Oh, oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Wake me up before you go. Right, go.
Okay.
You should be able to share, sorry.
All right. Hey there. Okay, so I'm Phil Silverman and I'm new to this. So this, all this, much of this information that was just shared was is new to me. And I'm just a homeowner here in Denver, Colorado, who happened to find out just a couple of months ago that I am the lucky recipient of a cellphone tower, microwave tower at the end of my driveway. So I just want to share a few quick things here with you. Okay. So that is our wonderful, started lovely city of Denver, Colorado, showing. There we go, showing Denver and the surrounding area. And here we have Denver showing the city council districts of our city. In the upper right is Denver International Airport, blah, blah, blah. And then here is the map of the city of Denver showing all the five G towers, microwave towers that are either scheduled or already installed in the city. So the red dots indicate a company named Crown Castle. And the green that you see in the the bottom more or less is AT&amp;T. And the blue, which is the the most of the the towers are from Verizon. So an interesting thing happened in twenty nineteen in that the Denver Public School Board fought the telecommunications industry to try to keep the keep antennas off of the school buildings and they actually won. So that was a good thing. But now it's what's happening, as you can see here in this map, we've got my bad. All right. So we've got George Washington High School, McMean Elementary School and Corey Merrill School. And there's towers, I live near the McMean Elementary School and GW. And there's cellphone towers directly across the street from these schools. And those are already installed, they're not operational yet, but they are already installed. And what I learned recently is that this is actually worse than having them on the building. Because if they're on the building, they're going to be broadcasting out. If they're across the street from the building or on the sidewalk right next to the building, they're going to be broadcasting towards the school. So real quick, I want to go to the, I want to go live to the map. So there we see the map of Denver showing all the cellphone towers. And I'm just going to zoom in here. Hold on to your seats. And you can see that the the cellphone towers are essentially every block, every, every two or three blocks, north and south, east and west. So here we have the Congress Park area and you can see, as I was saying, we got self for towers every two blocks or three blocks.
Sorry, we're not seeing the map. We're just seeing that the table. It must have frozen up or something. I don't know.
Interesting. Okay.
It's on the table, you know, with the sixteen and the two two five.
That was something different. Hold on one second. How's that?
I'm not seeing it, no.
All right, no worries, no worries. We're just going to bail on that and
Yeah. So Phil, I think, given that we're running a little behind and I really want to give time to death there. Can we segue into Daphne's talk now?
Sure, absolutely. My main point was going to be, I don't know what happened logically here. Can you see that?
Yeah, it's still stuck on the the numbers.
Anyway, so so there's going to be about twenty five hundred towers throughout the city of Denver. And each tower represents potentially the loss of twenty to twenty five percent of the property value of the houses near those towers. So we're looking at close to three quarters of a billion dollars of uncompensated financial loss to the citizens of Denver. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Scary stuff. So that if you can unshare your screen, Phil, please, and then over to you, Daphne.
Thank you, everyone, for inviting me and thank you, Phil, for for initiating this whole process. I think it's so important. Thank you, everyone who's participating. You know, most of this conversation is about bad stuff and things are actually much worse than presented so far. You know, Scott, for example, spoke about the health effects, but those are not potential risks, though they're actually what, you know, all the science warned us of already manifested in terms of massive sickness among people. And for example, Scott talked about neuro behavioral problems, we see them all around us, we just look the other way. If you talk about ADHD in children, the rates are more than doubled in ten years. Autism rate more than four times in 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 ten, ten years. Micro sickness, which is a condition I suffer from, which is means various neurological effects from this radiation are literally epidemic scale. Cancer on the rise, including in children, for example, in children, the top four cancer that that the most, the four top condition that kill children nowadays are brain tumor, thyroid cancer, testis cancer and rectal cancer everywhere we use and or hold the cell phones. So all of this, you know, thousands of studies that were supposed to warn us manifest in epidemic of sickness and we just, as I said, looked the other way. I do want to say, add to what Phil said in terms of five G numbers. And further, I would say that the difference between five G and four G, between one G to four G, we're all about connecting people. Five G is different. It's not about connecting people, it's about connecting things. It's a technology, but it's also an infrastructure for the Internet of Things, artificial intelligence and anything and everything will come moving forward, which is the next stage transhumanism, where all of us are going to become part humans and part machines, which sounds like science fiction, but unfortunately, it's a reality. This is exactly what Google is doing. This is what Facebook is working on. And this is what Elon Musk is working on. And you can check his, for example, Neuralink company where they implanted various transmitter in the brain to see if they can comment communicate with their wireless devices. So what we're doing here, it's not, it's about health, but it's about our future in humans. And back to Phil's data, I just want to tell you what five G is in numbers. So we're talking about adding two thousand five hundred antennas in in Denver. But it means also connecting all the other device wirelesses, so there's more and more antennas. So according to the FCC, we're about to connect fifty billion more devices wirelessly. So this is clearly exponentially increases the our exposure to this radiation. They also talk about adding eight hundred thousand cell towers. So right now we have about three hundred. In addition to the three hundred thousand, we adding eight hundred thousand cell towers. That is not it. Elon Musk and other companies like Amazon working on 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 covering earth with wifi via satellites. Elon Musk got approval for twelve thousand satellites, he filed applications for thirty thousand more, so it's forty two thousand satellites. He also received approval for one million small antennas on the ground to support his infrastructure. And he filed a motion to add five to to increase that approval to five million. And this is just part of it. And so this is something that I believe we all must stop, whether for our health or health of our children and the health of the planet. People in Colorado are very environmentally oriented, the the evidence of harm to the environment are massive. It's, you know, the harms of wireless has been associated with causing the problem with bird migrations, bird deaths, bees colony collapse and effects on planet. And there's numerous studies, very, very strong studies. And many of the things that I believe that we attribute to climate change are really as a result of exposure, increase exposure to this radiation. And in numbers, between we started use wireless technology in ninety eighty four until now, thirty until now, 30 years later, we increased the levels of radiation in our environments by millions of times. And and the levels of radiation currently are quintillion times higher than what our body evolved to tolerate. And to think that this radiation is not affecting us is an absurdity. We are lecturing be electric beings. And radiation or electricity, which is quintillion times higher than what our body evolved to tolerate, is absolutely and without doubt harmful. So if this is so harmful and there's so much evidence, how come we were made to believe that there's no evidence of harm and there's no problem? And how is it possible that this radiation is being forced on us? And what I usually say is that, you know, the wireless industry followed the tobacco industry playbook and perfected it. And the way it perfected it, it's really via the legal system and its its efforts in Congress. So you know, this fraud really started with 1996 legislation called the Telecommunication Act of 1996. And that legislation was crucial to involvement of all of this infrastructure. This legislation passed under Bill Clinton administration. And the most relevant section in that legislation to our issue is Section 704. And Section 704 did three things. Number one, it gave the FCC the power to regulate the health effect. The FCC is not a health agency, the FCC is a spectrum auctioning agency. And it doesn't even have one person on its team that that is an expert on health effects. They claim to rely on other agencies. After giving the power to the FCC to regulate it, the FCC was supposed to adopt guidelines within six months. The FCC adopted guidelines in 1996, which are based on what's known as the thermal effect. Meaning unless this radiation is transmitting an intensity that is causing a temperature change in tissue in your body, it doesn't harm you because it's non-ionizing radiation. As Scott said, that assumption was proven false in thousands of studies, actually in many studies before we ever commercialized wireless. But that assumption was promoted by engineers and physicists, many working for the military and the wireless industry. And for them, maintaining that assumption was crucial. And that's why the most important thing for these companies was to take over regulatory agencies like the FCC and what's known as ICNIP and the WHO, and maintain that false assumption of thermal effects. The FCC is a capture agency, and there is a great report written by Harvard University to that effect. It's called Captured Agency, how the FCC controlled by the industry is supposed to regulate. The second thing this legislation did was to take the states from the power from the states to regulate health effects of wireless. And the way it was done, it's by a section that's saying that states are not allowed to regulate the placements of cell towers based on environmental effects. Environmental was interpreted to mean health. So what it means in reality, it means that, let's say, they want to put a cell tower in front of your home, like they're going to do now to Phil. And you being shocked by the evidence you just heard, and you say, I don't want this tower in front of my home. And they say, no, you cannot discuss health effect, and you cannot object installation of these antennas based on health effect. And that is monstrous. Now, this has become even worse by various courts decision. So let's say they put that tower in front of your home, and now you got injured from it, which you likely will. And daily, I'm getting emails from families that had 5G antenna installed in front of their homes. And some within days, some within months just get sick. Their most recent one I got a couple of days ago from a family that the mother was pregnant and they put a 5G antenna and and shortly after she had an abortion. She had a miscarriage. So this is really, this is happening. So what happens in such a situation, and you basically want to sue for damages? So there are courts decisions that says that you cannot sue for the damages that caused to you because of something called implied preemption. Essentially, they say, since if you allow to sue for damages, that indirectly will cause regulation of radio frequency radiation, which is barred by the state. So not only you cannot object this technology based on health effects, now you cannot even sue for the damages that were caused to you as a result of this radiation. These are the main terrible things that that legislation did. It's basically prevented us from suing or for any element of this technology based on health effects. And that's monstrous. Things became worse when it came to 5G. So 5G really dependent in order to connect all these billions of devices, they need more antennas everywhere. And I do want to say something on millimeter wave, millimeter waves are not really what 5G is about. Millimeter wave was, you know, the idea was to interconnect more devices that transmit more data. And if you want more data, you need more bandwidth, like bigger roads to transfer the data. Millimeter waves have bigger capacity to carry data, so they thought that that would be a solution. But Verizon, which really promoted the use of millimeter wave, discovered that that's not so smart. And actually, now they're backing, they're backing off from the millimeter waves and going back to more of a combination of 4G, meaning midbands, 2.5 to 4.2 gigahertz. So essentially, 5G, it's not about specific frequencies, it's about transferring more data and their various solutions. One of the solution is really adding more of these antennas, which is what they're doing. Now, they expected that they're going to be objection, but more so, they understood that to deploy this amount of antennas, 800,000 to support this deployment, it's going to cost a lot of money to the wireless industry. And since the wireless industry control the FCC, the wireless industry had to, you know, got the FCC to give them basically unlimited ability to deploy those antennas. And that was mainly done via regulation that passed in 2018, in September 2018, that limited municipal power to take almost any action and regulate location of antennas within its boundaries. So if until until 2018, you could regulate the locations of cell towers based on aesthetics and other elements, you only could not regulate based on health. Now you now basically the FCC took the power for the municipality to regulate it based on any ground. The ability of municipality to do anything was severely limited. Now, many times the people go to their municipalities and and they try to get the municipality to do something. The municipality is saying that the hands are tied behind the back. That is partially true. While the municipality's power to do anything is severely limited, there is actually quite a lot they can do. And this is where you all come into the picture. It really depends on the amount of effort, determination of the grassroots, you know, of of anyone who's trying to stop this that will determine how much successful they're going to be. And there is quite a lot the municipalities can do to significantly limit the deployment of 5G within their towns. In turn, so this legislation that was passed in, regulation that passed in 2018 was challenged by numerous powerful cities. However, they lost in court, the basically the courts upheld the FCC regulation. One good thing happened as a result of this challenge is bring us to the next element of this is in 2012, Congress, the Government Accountability Office of Congress, published a report saying that it makes no sense that the FCC did not review its health guidelines from 1996, 17 years. And therefore, they probably should start a process to review their guidelines. The GAO also said that the testing of cellphone, which is done with distance from the head, it makes no sense considering this is not how we use cell phones. As a result, in 2013, the FCC opened a docket. A docket means that every time government wants to pass regulation, they have to open a docket to allow the public to comment. So in 2013, the FCC opened a docket and started an inquiry, not even a rulemaker, whether or not the FCC should review its health guidelines. That that docket was open for six years, and it probably would have stayed open forever unless one of the cities that challenged FCC 2018 regulation said, well, how is how it makes no sense that FCC will be allowed to deploy 5G, which is a massive change of infrastructure, when it still did not complete its review of the evidence as to whether there are health effects. Therefore, the FCC very quickly closed that docket and published a very minimal report saying there's no evidence of harm, we do not need to review the evidence. We do not need to review the guidelines. And that actually opened for us an opportunity for which I've been waiting for years to sue the FCC. So we had 60 days to sue the FCC and the Children's Health Defense and another organization, the Environmental Health Trust. Each group separately sued the FCC for its decision not to review its health guidelines. Basically, we sued the FCC under law, which is called the Administrative Procedure Act. This is how you sue the government, and we claim that the FCC decision is capricious, arbitrary, not evidence-based, and abuse of discretion. And in the past 13 months, I didn't leave my room working on this lawsuit with other amazing people, including Scott McCullough, who is the attorney I work with. And and basically, we showed why the FCC decision is, as I said, capricious. We showed that thousands of studies the FCC did not review. We showed that there is, you know, their their testing is only in regard to cellphone, what about cell towers? But most importantly, we showed that there is, that the FCC failed to review the chronic, the effects of chronic exposure to this radiation. So the FCC tests all these devices for 30 minutes exposure, acute exposure. But none of us is really using it for 30 minutes. We expose this radiation nonstop every day with many, many sources, some of which we have control, some we don't, and basically the FCC ignore that, you know, the reality of use of of this technology. We we filed to the court 11,000 pages of evidence. And on January 25th, we had a hearing in the case. And it actually went pretty well, and a little bit more than that. One of the judges in the case, Judge Wilkins, made an amazing statement, which judges don't usually make. And he actually said to the FCC, I'm inclined to rule against you. This is a statement a judge don't usually make, especially not on this level. Another judge, Judge Millet, I recommend everyone to listen to the hearing, it's very healing. Basically, gruel the FCC attorney about how insufficient their guidelines is and how they basically ignored the evidence and how they ignored the fact that the the reality, the wireless reality we live in now is completely different than 1996, and their guidelines do not address that. So now we're waiting for a court decision. It probably the court decision will be within four to six months from now. That decision would not give us too much, basically it will vacate the FCC decision. And the FCC can, you know, continue withholding or do anything forever. But the fact is that if indeed the court will rule against in our favor, that will be a court statement that FCC guideline is sufficient, and FCC did not do its job. And that will be huge to all our efforts. Now, this is really kind of like a point of hope, but things are still pretty bad. And there is another pretty disturbing legislation that just got into effect. So there is a new regulation from the FCC called the OTARD rule, O-T-A-R-D, which means over the air receiving devices. This is a rule that was already in effect long ago, and now the FCC passed pass an extension to that rule. Now, what that rule does is essentially allowing data related antennas on homes or anywhere and everywhere without any need to go through any municipal or state regulation, applications. They bypass homeowner association and even did restrictions. So basically, the telecommunications company can come to your neighbor and say, hey, would you mind put this antenna? As long as the antenna diameter is is smaller than one meter or three feet, they don't need to do anything, no, no applications, no permissions, no nothing, they don't have to tell anyone. And, you know, you're back up one morning, and you never have an antenna with very intense radiation. There's not even limitations on the amount of radiation emitted by these devices. So by passing this rule, the FCC bypassed all of the little control municipality had over the regulation of of 5G. And the thing is, while the only thing that is not allowed is cell tower antennas per se, it basically allow anything with data. And as we know, nowadays, radar and router and 5G system are also allowing calls. So essentially, those antennas are the major deployment of 5G. Most of the deployment of 5G will be done through the OTARD, because 5G is really about data and about connecting those devices and allowing those company to deploy those antennas via the OTARD rule, now allowing a massive deployment of 5G. And all our rights to objectives are being taken away. So this is really, this this law passed on January 7, and it's pretty monstrous. And and very problematic. So this is, this is the legal environment in which we all operate, and it sounds not so good. But as I said before, there is some hope. And I think that the hope is in the grassroots and the legal actions we're taking. The smaller legal actions that we can take are very limited. As I said, most of our rights to sue on this issue are being preempted. And that's why those big lawsuits like the case we went against the FCC are really the major way to to sue for this. The problem is those cases are very expensive. I mean, the previous case cost us about $500,000. So, but as I said, not all depressing, a lot of good things have been happening. And the grassroots efforts have been proving to be pretty effective. More and more scientists and doctors around the world are joining our effort and saying that this is harmful. Probably the most encouraging report that was published recently was came from Switzerland, where a government committee called Bernice, which until now denied any harm, actually published a report admitting the harms. In the US, there was a very impressive report by the state of New Hampshire, which is the only state that decided to review the studies on the health effects of 5G. And the conclusion was that, yes, there's clear evidence of harm, both from, you know, previous technologies and 5G. However, again, the states are preempted from taking real action on this. But still, the more voices out there that are saying that this is harmful, the more impact we're going to have. And that, and 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 the thing is, it's very difficult for us to change anything in Congress. That's why we're working on courts and on the municipal and state level. As you know, many of our legislators are being funded by the telecom industry. And if you know, want to know the extent, there is in the Harvard report, for example, they say that between 2013 to 2014, the telecom company put $800 million in lobbying money in DC. 463 lobbyists for the telecom industry are registered in DC in Congress. In in the states, the same, the same goes, almost there have like a lobbyist per per legislator. So it's very difficult for us to create change via state and federal legislature. So we really depend on the grassroots, and our grassroots have been doing a lot of impact. Since 5G was really not about cell phones, 5G about improving cellphone connections. Suddenly, everyone is surprised that 5G does not deliver what it promised. It's because what they say it's going to be, it's something different when it's really what this actually is. So 5G is not going to provide much faster internet and people faster cellphone connection. So people are not going to be very satisfied with 5G. And so the industry had to come up with excuses. And in one recent report, they said that, well, that they were not, one of the reason 5G is failing, it's because they did not expect a massive objector from the grassroots. This effort that we're all involved in and trying to stop them in our municipality, costing them a lot of money, slowing them down, and is effective. While this is happening, we can do the bigger actions, like the bigger lawsuits and getting more and more organization on our side. So it's crucial that the grassroots will continue to grow. And all of us will put a lot of effort into stopping this in municipalities. And more and more municipalities are standing up to this. And they're finding creative ways to limit the deployment of 5G within their cities and municipalities. What can you do? So I think it's really important not one to educate your communities. Because the more power you have in your community, the more impact you have on your on your municipality. Once you get a really good group of people to work with you, to put pressure on your municipality, you can access your municipality and ask the municipality to organize a session like this, which is information session, when you actually tell them about the health effects and what this really means. Some will tell you that you cannot mention the health effect and that they cannot make a decision based on health effect. Well, maybe they cannot make a decision based on health effects, but they need to hear about the health effect. And it's your right to tell them about the health effect. Now, you know, and so municipalities that really were convinced and and the local group put a lot of pressure did take action to limit the deployment. You have on this call a woman, Susan Foster, who is a newcomer to Colorado. And she actually has been involved in two very successful efforts in two communities, one in Encinitas, where she used to live. And the other one, right now, she's helping the efforts in Malibu, where the community is already also doing pretty good progress. It's still in progress, but they are making an impact. And so the key is really to help the municipality adopt ordinance that will have limitations on the deployment of five G. Probably the most uh effective one will be to demand insurance from those companies. Right now, many of these companies do not even provide proper liability insurance to the municipality in case of lawsuit. My um, five G is considered, um, sorry, wireless technology and the radiation they emit, they considered a pollution, a pollutant. And therefore, uh, most liability insurance are excluding uh liability for wireless radiation health effects. So most of these insurance policies that are given to municipalities do not include insurance for injuries. And unfortunately, and we've been saying it often, the municipal attorney is not aware of this. They do not even look at those insurance policies. So this is your, this is one thing you can kind of like point out to municipality to look at those liability insurance policies and see that they're not covered from insurance against lawsuits for adverse health effects. And the thing is, if they will be sued, those lawsuits are not for one million dollars. Usually, if, you know, if jury gives damages, there are few good million dollars. And they can find themselves uh exposed in a way that can actually lead to their bankruptcy. So not making sure they have insurance is actually negligence. And one of the things, for example, we suggested in Malibu, it's not only to, to demand insurance, it's also to demand very high limits for insurance. And to condition the um, the, the approval of the application uh by getting that insurance, seeing the policy before they can do anything and move forward. Now, the important of this step is um, while we did not learn of what happened with the tobacco uh fraud, the insurance company did learn because insurance companies almost went bankrupt when the tobacco lawsuit started. The major insurance companies, which are called the secondary insurance companies, which are the insurance companies that insure the insurance companies such as Swiss Re and, and Lloyds of London. They gave an order to the uh insurance company not to insure the telecom industry for health effects. Because if those lawsuits were starting to be successful, that can lead to considering the, the, you know, the proliferation, that can lead to bankruptcy again. And so they do not want to insure those industry. So um, actually, that might be very difficult for them to actually get insurance policy to cover um, personal injuries and so that by itself can even be a stop to five G in your towns. The other uh potential um, uh clauses that your uh municipality can adopt to slow down deployment, distance from homes, which is through something called preferred zones, so the municipality can say that they're in, I mean, that there is kind of like first they, you know, they have to show that, uh, they have to find locations which are far away from residential, et cetera, et cetera. So it's called preferred locations, um setbacks from homes and schools. They have to prove gap of service before they're allowed to put an antenna. So it's quite a lot that they still can do. And I gave Phil um, a summary that we created, a legal summary for um, things, you know, municipalities can do to limit the deployment of five G. Um, another um, uh, way to act is to adopt a resolution of cease and desist, which basically the municipality call the wireless industry not to deploy antennas within the town. They, it's, it doesn't have really any legal uh, uh, meaning. So you know, if the wireless industry want, they can continue and deploy, but it sends a message, we don't want it here. We think there is a health risk and we ask you to uh, not to continue and deploy these antennas within our town. So there are things to do and um, our grassroots is uh getting traction and things are changing. And um, so while things can look pretty depressing at times, they also look pretty hopeful. And I do think we are making an impact and hopefully we'll win this case and that also will create a lot of traction in, in terms of getting change in the political arena. Thank you.
Definitely. Wow, thank you so much. Those of you that are, are following the uh, the, the, the clock here will know that we're over our no, 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 this is positive, over our original um, uh, estimated agenda. But um, I think you'll all agree, what we've learned today is absolutely outstanding and, and it's not a simple topic. Daphna has already covered some significant um call to action elements that we would, that we have listed here. And um, I, I would um, like to, to offer, we can take a, uh, maybe two or three questions and quickly um, address those if there's something that, uh, from what you've heard already has not been addressed. And then I'd like to just finish up the session and say, Coloradans for Safe Technology, we are already working on some of those things. But as Daphner and others have said, it's all about grassroots. At the end of the day, it's, it's a ballot box issue, it's about door knocking, it's about getting active in your local community. So we uh want um, you uh who are on this call, who uh I hope are as concerned as we are, to, to come and join us and in many hands make light work. And we would really appreciate that. So, so let's see if we've got uh, any particular questions there, let's see.
I see one which is important, there's a question asking me about the OTARD rule, if it's also preempted ADN FHIA, likely yes, that's why it's so monstrous.
Oh, that's
Meaning disability accommodation.
Yes, sorry, yes, yes. Okay, any other uh questions that anyone has at this point? Put them in the chat if you do. Okay, nothing coming through just yet, oh, hang on. I'm, I'm getting this up. Right, so um, just while we wait, hang on, here's one from, uh, let's see. Can anything be done once a tower is put across from a church or school? Is the church liable for harm done to people? Daphna, do you want to take that one?
So as I said, um, it's very difficult to suffer for um, um, for um damages. Because allegedly um, that was preempted. I think that um, and, and I'm serious in terms of call for action here. We are interested to find cases in which schools and or churches would like to remove cell towers that were installed on their property. We believe that um, we want private parties who sign with the telecom industry to start and break their uh contracts with the telecom industry for cell towers. So the way I would approach it, I would first uh, uh, contact, you know, the school or the uh church and start and educate them about the health effects and, and what it really means. And then uh, if you contact me, um, I promise to try and help you um, help to those uh, to the schools or churches to, to bypass the legal barriers to basically breaking that contract. I can advise you and help you figure out a way to get out of those contracts. I think it's really important and I think if we can create a trend of um, private parties that break contracts for those cell phones, cell towers, that will be very uh, important. And I can provide a lot of, I'm in touch with a woman who had sent her daughter to private, three daughters to private school, uh, which is a religious school and they put an antenna in the school and her daughter, seven year old, started to get heart palpitation and various serious other adverse effects. In fact, the other daughter got ADHD, et cetera, et cetera. Children are suffering and um, we need to take out all of those antennas from these properties.
Great, thank you. We have another question, uh, again, definitely it's regarding OTARD. Would it be possible to sue a neighbor for putting an antenna uh on their home?
Yes and no. So again, this is the tricky part. So most of our rights to sue have been preempted. If your neighbor will put, you probably do have, and this is one of the things we, um, the, the chair of health defense did try and, and fight the OTARD rule. We filed a legal letter to the FCC docket and we got fifteen thousand people, including many from Colorado, to object that uh, uh, rule. And um, we did discuss those kind of actions. We do think that uh, to be more difficult for people to sue for, uh, basically it's called nuisance. Considering the OTARD rule, so it's, it's going to be tough.
Okay.
It's even more limiting our ability to act.
Right, thank you, Daphna. All the questions are heading to you. Um, thank goodness you're here. One question, can the ninety ninety-six T C A be challenged as unconstitutional?
There is one lawsuit right now that is challenging section seven oh four. And um, it's done by Arthur and first, Arthur Forstenberg. I don't know if you know him, uh, if not, look him up. He created this amazing space appeal on which uh, over three hundred thousand people already signed. He wrote an amazing book called Invisible Rainbow, where I recommend anyone to read this book. He did challenge another section seven oh four. Uh, I know he had arguments on January twenty first, um, you know, we have to wait and see uh what the court rule. And yes, we will consider in challenging it, uh, but you know, since he already challenged it, I didn't see any point at this point to challenge it, so. But eventually we'll have to go to Congress, but you know, we have to wait that we have stronger case to go to Congress. And I think if we get a favorable decision in our case against the FCC, that would be a good time to go to Congress and try and create change.
Here's a, here's a, uh, an immediate uh question for, for a homeowner. Can we call police on workers installing a tower if they're unable to show a permit?
Of course, that is, that is really important. I mean, communities has to be resourceful and I do advise communities, uh, and I know it can be pretty hefty. But if you can hire an attorney to help you, um, you know, find applicable fault, you know, problems with the application, that would be one way to attack. Those are technicalities, those can delay, but anything that delay works. So um, um, yes, so when you see someone coming and working on a cell tower near your house, check and ask them to show you the permit. You can call the police and I can tell you that from a lot of reports I'm getting from around the country, including close friends, many times they actually do deploy those antennas without permits. So it will be worthwhile thing to do.
Related to that, we've had uh questions around um, fire regulations, for example. Do, can the cities require telecoms to provide certification of fire safety?
Yes, um, but I think that the best, and I want to, I mean, this is something I'm not so strong on, because I've been, you know, this is not my, uh, you know, the, the fire issue, but it's huge, including California where I'm working. And I know that Susan Foster worked on it, I don't know if she's still on the call. Is she on the call, Susan? She was there before.
Maybe, maybe not.
No, I don't see her anymore. Now, so uh Susan Foster, who is in Colorado, she worked on, on, on that issue in regards to Malibu. And I think she, she might be a good person to contact and send an update on the, on the fire regulation.
Susan is uh working closely, she is a member of our group and
Fantastic, so yeah, so she, she did a lot of very thorough work on this. I, I know I just didn't have time to look at it because of the case.
Right. The, another point that has been brought up is, is, is part of the New Hampshire Commission was to have states and cities monitor excessive tower radiation. Uh, that's another question that came up. I mean, as you say, anything we can do to make it more expensive for them or delay or whatever, I think that's your strong message, is that correct, Daphna?
Correct, I mean, everything we can do, um, it's really have an impact. I mean, it, it does slow them down.
Right, right.
Again, I, I have a comment I'd like
Yes.
I think you, we need to call attention to the fact that what, one of the strategies that we're pursuing is not just about in Colorado, not just about uh, educating people on this issue. But one way to do it is an effort to repeal the state law that was passed in two thousand seventeen prohibited cities from regulating, municipalities from regulating cell sites. Even though it's a tall undertaking to repeal anything like that, that was so solidly backed by the telecom guys. The um, is called a, a, the bill is called House Bill seventeen eleven ninety-three, built, passed in two thousand seventeen. And we have an effort going on to repeal that bill. And that's a good excuse to contact your, for us to contact legislators and bring this issue forward, uh, as well as contact local officials. And uh, and we uh see a lot of sympathy for this, the local level. But uh, translating that into legislative action is, is another uh matter. Also, the, there, another bill that needs to be repealed is a, a bill called Senate Bill oh five one fifty-two, which is related in that it prohibits localities from installing prohibits municipalities from installing optical fiber networks, which would compete with five G. Or any wireless systems. And that was another industry bill that was passed in two thousand five. And so repealing both of those, I was on a call last night with uh some members of the legislature. And that was actually brought up, that, that was, that repeal of uh one fifty-two is uh, you know, is something that's on their radar. We need to uh bring this issue uh along with it.
I think that um, what happens is um, industry is uh, saying what we're doing. And you know, the, I know team is really working massively on the uh pushing the fiber optic infrastructure, which is crucial to what we're doing. And um, so there are efforts to uh try and prevent municipalities from having their own networks. There are bills in Congress on this. And we're going to see a lot of objection, but we cannot kind of get frustrated by it or scared or, or feel that, you know, there's no chance. Sometimes, you know, those kind, there, there is a famous Gandhi sentence, you know, first they, they laugh at you, then they ignore you, then they fight you, then you win. So we are really in the fight stage and they're fighting and that's a good sign for us that we just need to continue and fight back. And um, it might be worthwhile for you guys to, there's, you know, there are systems that um, you can, um, platforms that you can send, people can just basically go and, and, and click and then the email sent to all the legislators. And that can help you create massive impact on your legislature. One, a word of cautions, so in, in the state of Colorado, you have an attorney general who is really pushing telecommunications. He used to be a telecommunications professor in the University of Colorado. Um, and so that is something to be aware of. So don't rely on him to help you in any way. I, I, that's my opinion.
Right, thank you.
He'll go whichever way he sees the political wind blowing.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Sorry, but be aware his background, you may want to explore that.
Sure, so the, the last comments and Tim, I'm glad you brought that up because that flows really nicely into the call to action point that we want to make and, you know, we're getting the, the near the end of our time. Time flies when you're having fun. And um, and so uh, as has been pointed out in the comments, uh, in the chat as well, our effort in, in Coloradans for Safe Technology is multifaceted. We have a very active legislative team and hats off to the work that the folks are doing there. Their main focus is on repealing seventeen eleven ninety-three. But they're also looking at, at any legislative aspect as well. We have some, any other legislative aspect. We have had some success on local county and city levels getting um extended setbacks, Laramie County, for example. And through the work of Cindy Pick and, and many others. So there is actually, we do have some success. We have uh work that's being done in La Plata County with Nancy Van Dover and, and Deborah Schisler and others down there. So um, we are moving forward, but we need more hands on deck. And, and I hope that those of you that are new to this topic and, and um, have the same concerns as we do, we hope that you really do consider uh coming to join us. And our message is, please get involved as much or as little as, as you want to and you're available to. Now, the way we, we would encourage you to do that, on our website, we have a volunteer button, which makes it real simple. So please click that and send unmarked notes, I mean, no, sorry, no, no, that's the other button. Please just send your contact information. And um, if you have an interest, if in, in any particular area, it could be working on the legislative stuff. It could be education, it could be outreach, it could be fundraising, it could be communications. And if you have special skills that you'd like to bring to the table, please do that and we will get back to you very, very quickly. And again, given that we're focused on Denver today, the same issue that Denver is facing, every location in the world is facing, it's not just Denver. So um, Phil can help us with how to, how to get that data for wherever you live, if you're not in Denver. And if you do live in Denver, please, when you click the volunteer button, highlight you're in Denver and would like to be part of a Denver group. So um, Daphna mentioned communities, so that is also a very strong thing that we want to do is, is coalesce groups of concerned and Groups of concerned and, uh, citizens, people in, in your local community. Because that's going to facilitate getting to know the legislators and all this sort of stuff. So, um, please, please, uh, do that. And, um, you know, together we, we really can make a difference. And, uh, so.
That's the only thing that will make a difference.
E- exactly, exactly. So.
Can I jump in real quick here?
Please, Scott, please.
I just want, I, uh, noticed Lance Rushton, um, point, pointed out, um. What was asking, you know, how can we get this amazing Zoom call with all this information out? Um, and, and I'll say to, you know, to, to interested parties, um, and, and, and also he, he also mentions. Uh, out maybe to neighborhood associations. And so if you could say in a note about how, how people can, can get access to the. To the recording, can they send a link, uh, to other people that, that would like to get the recording? What, what should they do if they want?
Yeah.
To, to have a town hall, for example, maybe in their town.
Absolutely.
Or, or, you know, their HOA or wha- whatever, their, their group, their large group.
So this, this call is being recorded and this will be posted, um, uh, very soon on our, on our website. Um, we have a, a tab, uh, on the website called Monthly Calls, um, and that's where we're putting the videos of, um. Uh, sessions like this. Uh, so, uh, I, I have your email. I will, uh, only communicate blind copying. Uh, emails on that. So that'll be coming out soon. We'll also have, uh, links to what has been mentioned by our expert panel members. Um, as well. And if you go into our resources section on our website, you'll find links to many, many different organizations. Including Children's Health, um, uh, Environmental Health has some wonderful, uh, one-page fact sheets. Um, and if, if in doubt, uh, get in touch and, and we'll guide you in, in that direction. Um, so Scott, your, your comments are spot on. And yes, if you would like something like this in your community. Um, contact us. I mean, we, we, we're very, very keen to try and get the word out. And in fact, uh, our outreach, we, we have outreach in about fifteen counties of the sixty-four in Colorado. That's not enough. We want to get a present across the whole state. So absolutely. Anything else? Um, Phil or anybody else?
I think that, uh, one, um, I'm, I'm not sure how to pronounce your name, Rion, how do you say it?
Orion.
Orion. Um, I think, you know, this can be very scary. And I think that one place in which people do have control on their exposure in their homes. And I do recommend, especially when the exposure is growing so exponentially, what you do want to do is try and, and reduce your exposure in your home. And we have around here, I mean, people can do quite a lot to help their body heal from this and help your body sustain. Um, this radiation and it's really, um, there are a lot of people out there who are building biologists. Uh, and hell, can help you mitigate the radiation in your house and, and so that would be something you may want to explore.
Right, thank you so much. Yes, I was going to, to mention that. Ryan, um, uh, Ryan did a talk for us at one of our monthly meetings. If you go into our website, uh, you can find the video of his talk and it was extremely informative. And there are things that you can do. Um, Scott, are you still there? Did we lose Scott?
Yeah, no, I am here.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I don't want to put you on the spot, mate, but, um, can you talk about your hat?
Well, thank you for asking about my hat.
Yeah, yeah.
That my hat is a silver lined hat. It is, it is a, um. Uh, it is an E, which, which means that it, it prevents EMF, uh, electromagnetic frequency radiation. From, uh, penetrating my hat. And the, the hope is to protect my brain to, um. To hopefully a large extent, I've, I've been wearing it for the next, for the last four weeks or so. And, um, I, I am electromagnetically hypersensitive, um. And I've, uh, as, as Daphna, um, mentioned, um, there, there's a lot that, that can be done to. To an, to an individual home. So we've, we've hardwired our home to a very large extent. And I actually have, I, I measure it with my, um.
Meter.
Meter. Thank you. And, uh, so I keep an eye on it and I, I've made a lot of discoveries, by the way, using my meter. But, um, so it's sometimes difficult, well, it's, I should, I should say it's universally difficult to get away from this stuff. Uh, even if you're very conscientious with your home, your office, that sort of thing. So sometimes you just have to put a silver cap on.
By the way, I, a word of caution, so I'm electro sensitive and I do want to recommend people actually not to buy those things so fast. If you're, I mean, the, um, metal is, uh, both blocking radiation, but it's also a conductor. Can act as an antenna. And electricity in general is very, very complex, especially when interacting with our body. Which, as I said before, is an electric system. You know, uh, our brain is an electric system, our brainwaves work on freak, on low frequencies. Um, and when you use those fire breaks, on the one hand, they block radiation from coming to your body. On the other hand, they also block. Radiation coming out of your body. And for me personally, when I wear those shielding fabrics, I actually get sicker rather than better. So if you are, if you are, and I can, I can go into, I know, we can talk about it one day. Um, but if you are electro sensitive, you can try those shielding fabrics because you probably will be able to feel if they making you. If they're helpful for you or not. And also they can be helpful in certain situation, but harmful in others. Depends where the radiation is coming from, et cetera. But if you are not electro, if you don't feel consciously that radiation, I'm absolutely against it. Because you would not know if it's harmful to you or helpful to you and it can cause harm. And I see a lot of, uh, baby blankets being, you know, sold out there. Just please don't. And there's also a lot of companies, I mean, you know, this, the message about wireless is growing fast and people are getting sick and people are getting concerned. And they want quick fixes. And unfortunately, a lot of companies that, that offer a lot of different products, uh, which have no scientific basis. And people with their desperation, and since this is a complex issue, just buy, buy, buy. Mostly they're not helpful, sometimes they're actually harmful. So just really be careful and, and work with people who are reliable and know what they're talking about and don't try to sell your stuff. But rather, there's no, uh, help you to avoid this. This is really the solution, reduction, not, not.
Wow, great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
It can, yes. Quick comment.
Yes.
And thanks, D- Daphna, for that, the comment on the shielding fabric, whether it's fabric or, or your home. Really careful and, and consult with somebody that knows what they're doing. Um, just a quick comment on the five G towers that I've tested. Often, as, as has been discussed here, they're, they're, um, incorporated, uh, in combination with. Or together with three G or four G frequencies. However, um. I've seen some Verizon towers that have no three G or four G frequencies. There are only five G towers. Um, so there was a question about whether you could measure them. And there's certainly meters and things to measure, you know, the, the lower frequency band, um, that Timothy was talking about. Um, that is more typical with three G or four G. But, uh, the five G exposure, that requires a spectrum analyzer and that's not something you can purchase off the shelf and it's very expensive.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, great, thank you. Okay, guys, I, I'm gonna call it here. We've gone a little over. Um, it, it's always like a concert. It's always good to have them wanting more. Um, so please be, uh, very open and, and suggesting what you, you might want to hear more about. We are here, we are just like you. We, we are here trying to do the best thing for the people and the critters that we, we know and love. Um, so I want to thank everybody sincerely, um, and, and especially our, our panel for giving up. Uh, time to, to share with us today and for all of you people who signed on, on board to, to listen to this. Um, you will be hearing from, from, from me very soon with, with links. Uh, we have the chat recorded and everything. So I, I, I am so excited about what we, what we learned today and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.